He decided to give them the weight he felt was right. And that you you later explained that, you know, when you do not know your worth or your value, you are you you simply, you can simply be, you just be swept by any, any wind of doctrine. It's not even just any wind of doctrine, but even in like in life, when you do not know your purpose, you or you do not know your value, you will not be giving what you deserve. And for me, I have, I've read that scripture over and over, but I think it really hits home. Last week, when you were explaining, and I, I, I put down a lot of notes. It's really opened my eyes. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you also for sharing. I listened to it, you know, just before today, just before this evening's meeting. I listened to last week's session, just to see what any areas that I need, need to maybe iron out a bit more. And, um, and yes, I even listening to that, I was blessed by it, you know, and don't be, you know, surprised that, you know, I listen to what I preach or, you know, teach all the time. Because I, I recognize that the word is not my own, it's God's word. So even if it comes through my mouth, it doesn't mean that I can't learn from it. So I learned from myself as I listened to myself. And that parable for me is also the first time the realization, when it dawned on me that this is really what this parable was implying, you know, it, it swept me off, off, off my feet. Because I thought, wow, so it means that people value me according to how I value myself. And it means that if I am idle, people look at me and they don't value me quite, you know, they don't consider me to be worth an awful lot. But if I am busy doing something, then someone coming to offer me something, he's going to think, oh, this guy is already occupied with something really important. If I want to attract him to come and do what I'm doing, what I, what I want him to do, I'd better make sure the reward is worth it. You know, a few years back, I was working, I mean, before, when I first came to the UK, before I passed my license and exams, I couldn't practice as a doctor, I had to get other jobs. And I was working in a, for recruitment agency, I was working in the office as a recruitment, you know, consultant, so to speak, but you know, really, there were just two of us. So you could say it was just a recruitment assistant or something. But I got a phone call from a lady whom I didn't know, and she was a headhunter. She was looking for, I think they just set up a recruitment agency. And they didn't just want to go and employ some, some newbies. They wanted to find people who were currently employed as recruitment consultants and headhunt them, bring them over to their company. So they just called, they spoke to me. And they said, you know, what do you do? And then they said, look, why not come and work for us? I was shocked. I didn't know the things like that happened, that somebody can call you whilst you were in a job and then ask you, why not come and work for us? Of course, I didn't want to go and work for them. And at that point, because I was already in a job, this lady couldn't have offered me less than what I was earning in that job. And because she was the one who came looking for me rather than me looking for her, I could have named my price. You see, when you are occupied, when you've got something in your life that you're doing, that raises your value. And people who want to engage you in some other activities, they have to persuade you that whatever they want you to do is worth it. And they had better give you the right reward, right remuneration, otherwise you wouldn't go over. And this thing applies in the things of God as well. If you, if you are occupied with your calling, you know, the devil can't just come and trick you with some silly thing and, and then get you, you know, distracted. But when you, you don't know your calling, when you, you're just hanging around in the church, that's when different, you can get drawn into different sort of activities. So thank you, Myrin, for bringing this up. And does anyone else want to share something that they've learned over the past two sessions?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
You know, I, last week, in answer to a question I asked, and in explaining, you said something about, you know, finding materials, okay, you know, like, I mean, when I was asking about when you feel like, you know, you are not getting, being nervous enough to stress and you want, and you, you talked about finding, you know, some materials to study on your own. And then you mentioned something about strongholds, like you said, then you can break the strongholds that have been formed in your mind over the years. So my question is that mainly, when me initially, I thought that strongholds mainly were, they'd be family alters. Because normally when we go to church and we are praying, they say, okay, like breaking strongholds, efficiency, there's talk there about, yeah. So I thought there were family alters, okay, that were strongholds. So when you mention strongholds, you know, the thought, so now I want to know, I just want an explanation or say that are strongholds, family alters, or they are the thoughts or imagination that have been formed in our mind, that have become strongholds, that we are not, we have not been able to break from, or we are not able to break away from. Our water efficiency was talking about, no, family alters, as we pray in church. You know, we pray, we saw my view breaking strongholds and all that.
Yes, that's a very good question and very pertinent to those of us, you know, from Africa, from, from Ghana. And, you know, which applies to everyone on the platform right now. So yes, um, strongholds, there can be various, in general, you know, there, there can be strongholds, they come in different forms, but for a believer, the biggest stronghold is in your own mind. It's not elsewhere. You see, you are in Christ, and we are going to be talking about it. When you are a child of God and you believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, it's not just that Jesus comes to live in you, which is what we keep hammering, oh, Jesus will come into your heart. But what we fail to teach people, which is an even greater truth than Jesus in you, it's that you are in Jesus. If you want to do a, a study, just go on BibleGateway.com and search for scriptures talking about you being in Christ. And you will see that there are far more scriptures that talk about you being in Christ than scriptures that talk about Christ being in you. Because you being in Christ is a much bigger issue. It means that when the devil comes to attack you, the first person he sees is not you, it's Christ. He says that you, you, you have been saved and your life is hidden with Christ in God. That's where God has placed you. So family alters, what has that got to do with me? The Bible says, I've been translated from the kingdom of darkness and placed in the kingdom of his dear son, the kingdom of light, that's where I am. What these Bible, these, these preachers who teach about strongholds, what they've been trying to do and what they've really got people of the church, people in the church doing, is they've got them focusing on things that would have been true if we were not saved. If you are saved, it's not just that Jesus is in you, you are in Jesus. And because you are in Jesus, your, it's like your pedigree has changed. You were linked to Adam by sin, but now you are linked to Christ. You have now a new, you're a new offspring, you're a new creation. So you don't worry about alters and things like that anymore. The biggest stronghold for the believer is between his ears, right here. And if you open your Bibles to 2 Corinthians, chapter 10, reading from verses 3 to verse 5. Paul writes, "For though we walk in the flesh, we do not war after the flesh; for the weapons of our warfare, of our warfare, are not carnal, but mighty through God, to the pulling down of strongholds, casting down imaginations, and every high thing that exalted itself against the knowledge of God, and bringing into captivity," please note this, "every thought to the obedience of Christ." For the believer, the biggest obstacle is not somewhere, because you are in Christ. The maintain hindering you from experiencing the fullness of the kingdom is here. Your imaginations. What are imaginations? The thing that you think about, the, the worst case scenarios that you imagine, the war against the word of God. Remember that the word of God, for it to bear fruit in your life, it must settle in your mind. It must be believed. But it doesn't, the word of God won't have an easy path into your mind if there are already other thoughts, other philosophies, other ideas that have nested in your mind. So these other ideas have nested in your mind, if they have, they are just going to resist the word of God. So Jesus said, the traditions of men, they make void the word of God. How can, how can traditions of men make void the word of God? Because the traditions of men, what do they do? They nest themselves here. So you say, well, our forefathers did it like this, and this is how we're going to do it. And the word of God doesn't have a place. The word of God only bears fruit in our lives if it finds a place in our minds. So we need to cast down the imaginations, there's strongholds here, so that the word can have effect here. If you're going to see change in your life, you're going to see transformation, change must happen here first. So that's where the main strongholds are. Does this answer your question?
Yes, that's what I wanted to answer. It's very clear.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you too. Um, does anyone else want to share something from the past two lessons? We can take one more contribution before we continue.
Yes, I, I've been blessed a lot. I've been blessed a lot by the word. And about the three leopards, their decision to move out. Because we stay here, either we're going to die, and when we go, we are going to die as well. So what are we supposed to do? We have to give it a try. And I learnt a lot from that. And then about doctrines, that talks is like left, right, this, this denigration will say that, and non-denigration saying that, and you'll be under one pastor, his philosophy is different. And then you also be, because I've been with a lot of pastors, and I've had that challenge. And it, it drained me a lot from not moving on and doing the things that I have to do for God. Example, I came to London around two, two thousand and six. The pastor brought me to London, and when we got there, he said, look, I want you to be an associate pastor. I want to be my associate pastor. I said, what, what do you mean by associate pastor? Oh, no, 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 you are in London, look, forget, you have to enjoy it. I said, no, 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 relax, let me pray first. And I fasted for 30 days and I prayed. And I saw what the doctrine wasn't, wasn't in line with what I thought it was. So I had to retreat, and it became a war. His bodyguard threatened me and all that, I mean, so, and I came back to Ghana. So these are some of the things, they have different philosophies about, a pastor who preached, I say, hey, me, I did to meet you, we crystal now, I am, but I did to meet you, put them to me, and I meet my, is the, they, they, they have some sort of, I mean, something to scare you, for them to know, for you to know physically, although they are Christians, but behind the scenes, they, they are something else as well, and they want to keep that. Is there a lot of doctrines? And I don't know where they are heading to. So I keep on running, keep on running away from all those people. And finally, I got to start studying, 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 and, you know, I go back to myself. And I knew, I knew that, no, this is the way I have to work it. And I changed my path, I changed everything of mine. And here I am with the words from Miles, I've been listening to Miles and, you know, and what we talk about, all of them, it's in line, and I felt so happy that, no, I'm on track now. Because whatever you are talking about is the same thing I'm thinking about. So God bless you, God bless you so much.
God bless you too, God bless you, thank you. Good, so, um, with that, I'm going to share my screen now. Good, so over the past couple of sessions, and it feels like we've had lots of sessions, but actually, we've only just had two, this is the third one. And with the past couple of sessions, we've been talking about essentially God's plan for the universe. We've been talking about the wrong doctrines. We've been talking about why we can't find our calling, we struggle with knowing our calling. And we've talked about how there's some, you know, some of us, we ignore our instincts, we ignore our gifts, our passion. We, we haven't been exposed to true discipleship. There is no ministry focus in what we do, we just get saved and sit in benches in the church. And so we are not growing. We, we picked up on something last, during the last session, we talked about God being a king, him wanting to establish his kingdom or establish, extend his kingdom to the earth. And which is why he created mankind to be colonists on the earth. You and I are colonists, we were brought here, but we are colonists in rebellion. Of course, those of us that are not saved, we are colonists in rebellion, in rebellion. Then Christ came and saved us. And ever since we were saved, we've become colonists who are aligned with the purpose of God. But we must know God's, we must know God's will for our lives, we must know God's plan for the universe. Otherwise, even with the best will in the world, we still won't fulfill, we, we won't fulfill the will of the Father. We must know the will of the Father, we must understand his business on earth. You've heard the scripture, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all other things shall be given unto you." And I used to find that scripture confusing, because, you know, and his righteousness, what does it mean? His kingdom, and it's, what does it mean to seek the kingdom of God? Let's bring it down to today's English, let's bring it down to, to the, if Jesus was here talking to you and me, would he use that same language? He probably says something along the lines of, "Seek ye first God's business." That's the term he would have used. Seek first, pursue first God's business. What matters to him? What's his desire? Seek that first, and all other things will be added unto you. The people of those days, they, they understood the concept of a kingdom of God. It was what they were waiting for. Isaiah had prophesied about it, Daniel had prophesied about it, different prophets had prophesied about it. So they were respecting the kingdom. When Jesus died, resurrected, on the day when he was about, just about to ascend into heaven, his disciple asked him, "Lord, will you at this moment restore the kingdom unto Israel?" In other words, that's all they were waiting for, the kingdom. So it was okay for Jesus to speak to them in kingdom language. But what you will discover very quickly is that when you go through the acts of the apostles, you don't hear kingdom being mentioned very often. Because when you are talking to people, you must connect with them, you must relate, you must speak in a way that they will understand. You can't just keep using language that you are familiar with. One of the biggest problems of the church today is that the church has its lingo. It has this language that he uses that other believers understand. But unbelievers don't understand. So when we go to the world, we, we, we seem like sounding symbols to them. They don't know what we are talking about, we don't know how to relate. But Jesus knew how to relate to the people of his day. He knew what to say to whom, you know? So the kingdom message, I, I mean, we began to say that the kingdom message encompasses everything that God is doing on earth, it is God's business on earth. However, the disciples in different ages, they found a way to communicate God's principles to a, then the Gentile peoples who did not have a concept of the kingdom of God. You couldn't just walk into Rome or some other places and say, the kingdom of God is a, what is the kingdom of God? And who is God? They had many Gods. So they found a message that was relatable, but the concept did not go away, as we shall soon see. And that concept has been lost in the kingdom of God, right, in the, in the body of Christ right now, where we are not talking about church. The church, however, is an instrument, it's a means to an end. God, God set, God set up the church because of the kingdom. The church is supposed to portray the kingdom, the church is supposed to propagate the kingdom. Because ultimately, it's the kingdom that will reign. When you read the book of Revelation, you'll discover the end game is the kingdom. So God's business on earth is related to only one thing, the kingdom of God. Except that it's spoken about differently in different places. Okay, so today, we want to try and see how we have over-spiritualized our calling. It's one of the reasons why we can't identify our calling, is because we've over-spiritualized it. But I'm going to approach it from a slightly different angle. So when we were talking about why God needed to extend his kingdom from heaven, because we know that God is king and he dwells in heaven, we said that God is an artist. And artists have a need for self-expression. By the way, God being an artist is only one of the ways of describing him. He's a craftsman. In efficiency, he says, we are his workmanship. That's what a craftsman would describe his, his, his work, workmanship. We are his workmanship, created in Christ Jesus, unto good works. So we, God is a craftsman, he's an artisan, artisan, he is many things. But as an artist, he has a need to express himself. And he has chosen that it's not just the inanimate objects. It's not just, look, God says in Proverbs, you lazy person, go and see the, go, go and learn from the, from the ants who know how to gather food for a rainy day. He created them that way to depict some wisdom and to teach even mankind lessons. He has put messages all over creation. That's why nobody will be able to stand before God and say, I, I, I didn't know that you existed. And I, I didn't, you can't send me to hell because I didn't know you existed, there had no proof of your existence. It won't be possible for anybody to say that before God, you know what? Because creation is screaming at everybody. Creation is screaming at everybody, God is here. So God has left a mark of himself everywhere. But those marks, they are like still images, like photos. When God had done all of that, he said, still images are not good enough. We need motion, motion picture. We need a video, we need, we need something that will, will actually capture my nature in real time. Some, we need a being that is capable of making decisions. We need a being that has a, a being that has a free will, capable of making choices, just as I do. And let that being represent me on this planet. Let him be the colonist that will actually transform the planet into a place that looks just like where I dwell. That was God's idea, that was God's dream. And because of this dream, he made man. And he made him in his own image and likeness. Why? So that man would manifest his glory. We said that artists, when they create an artwork, the artwork manifests the artist's glory. Today, you can go to, um, you can go to the Louvre or different sort of museums, Reykjavik Museum in Amsterdam, or you go to the museums in London, you will find artwork of great artists who died 400 years ago, but their works were so great, they've been captured. Today, we know about those artists. We don't know about artist's mother, we don't know about artist's father, their children, no, we don't know about any of them. But we know about their artwork, because of what they did, we can't forget them. Picasso, Leonardo da Vinci, Michelangelo, we all know these people, we know their names. We've never met them before, but we know their names. Why? They left artwork behind. We studied the artwork, we know something about them, even though we never met them. That's what was God's dream. He created the whole of heavens to be his legacy. You look at the artwork, you know something about the maker. But above all, he pleased him that all of the beauty should be in a creature like you and me, to manifest. That's what the Bible says, "Unto the principalities and powers may be manifest the manifold wisdom of God." Well, through the church, through you and me, we are supposed to manifest the manifold wisdom of God, so that angelic beings will look and admire. That was God's plan. That's what David said, what is man? When I look at the, and that's when I, what is man that you are mindful of him? Who am I that you are mindful of me? I'm just an ordinary human being, less than nothing. Why do you even care? Well, because he had a desire. He had a desire to manifest his glory and to do it in this particular form. So you are God's artwork, you are, you are God's masterpiece. He has designed you perfectly for a purpose. Stop rubbishing yourself, stop rubbishing what God has put within you. Because if you do, you are rubbishing him, you are saying he didn't do a good job. You see, if you catch this revelation, you will stop praying some of the prayers that, you know, many of us have been praying. Some of our prayers are nothing but complaining before God. Oh, God, look at this, God, this has not changed, look at that, look. There's no need for any of that. You are his workmanship, showpiece, you are his showpiece. So God wanted to fill the whole earth with his glory. And there are so many scriptures that talk about it. "As truly as I live, the earth shall be filled with the glory of the Lord." That's in Numbers. One day, we will be able to actually study the context within which he said those words, because it's a powerful lesson there. "Blessed be his glorious name forever, and may the whole earth be filled with his glory." That's in Psalm 22, verse 19. And one called out to another and said, "Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts. The whole earth is full of his glory." That's Isaiah, chapter 6, verse 3, verse 3. "The earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord, as the waters cover the sea." That's in Habakkuk 2, 4. Now, this is the New Testament. "He who descended is himself also he who ascended above all the heavens, so that he might fill all things." Have you, have you seen that? Jesus, the Jesus that we know that walked, once he had become a quickening spirit. Once he had been, he had resurrected and had ascended into heaven, he had only one desire, to fill all things. Have you seen God's nature? It's to fill. And in all things, it's you he desires to fill the most. It's humans he desires to fill the most. That's why he said, "A time is coming when I shall pour my spirit upon all flesh, not just some tiny minority, all flesh." His desire is that everybody created in his image should also have his spirit flowing within him. Now, let's take a closer look at what it means to fill the earth with God's glory. Because in Christendom, we have, we use these concepts a lot, glory, glory to God. Often, I don't feel like we fully understand what we're saying. The word, the Greek word in the New Testament, the Greek word is called, is douxa. And douxa are, you know, I don't, I don't have a And douxa are, you know, I don't, I don't have a doctorate in, 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 in Greek. I tried to study where, in the meaning of words, using concordances and things like that, and you can do exactly the same. It's nothing, um, extraordinary about it. But douxa has lots of meanings, I captured these three. And these three, the first one says opinion, estimate. Or rather, let me start, let me start with the second one, splendor, brightness. That's what most of us think of when we say glory. You know, the Bible says that the glory of the Lord appeared in the temple when Solomon offered his sacrifices. And often, in Pentecostal and charismatic settings, when we are talking about the glory of God, that's what we're thinking about. We want something supernatural to appear. You know, the way the Israelites gathered at the foot of Mount Sinai and the glory of the Lord appeared on, on the mountain. That's how, that's what many of us are looking for. But you know that God appeared in human form on earth. And there was no cloud hovering over his head, there was no halo, there was no fire, nothing. So much so, that when he, he insinuated that he was the son of God, they decided to kill him because nonsense. If you are a son of God, you don't have any fire, no halo, no nothing, and you, you are the son of God? You're not even born in Jerusalem, you were born in Galilee. A place where we despise, the Galilee of the Gentiles, they used to call it. A true bread, a thoroughbred Jew should be born in, in the area of Jerusalem, in Judea. He was born in, eh, he was born in, in, in Bethlehem, of course, but they didn't, you know, most of them, they didn't know about it, they just knew that he was from Galilee. So the king of kings, when he decided to walk on this earth, he did not have a cloud over his head. That means this expla, this understanding of glory. This understanding of douxa, splendor, brightness, it's not the greatest manifestation of God's glory. It is glory, but it's not the greatest, because the Bible says that in the Hebrews, chapter one. God who at sundry times and in diverse manner spoke through our fathers has in the last days spoken through his son, who is the brightness of his glory. The express image. So if Jesus is the brightness of God's glory, and yet when he walked on earth, there was no fire, nothing. That tells me that the brightness that God is referring to has nothing to do with fiscal light. It has nothing to do with fiscal light, it's a different form of glory. God can appear in a cloud, a pillar of cloud, a pillar of fire, he can do all of that. But that's not the greatest manifestation of his glory, that's not what he craves. That's not what he craves. So what does he crave? Glory can also mean majesty of, of, of God or a king. Jesus said, I say unto you that even Solomon in all his glory was not arrayed like one of these, he was referring to the lilies. Again, Isaiah saw a vision of God. The Bible says he was high lifted up and his, the train of his robe filled the temple. That was the majesty of the king of kings. But even that was not the highest manifestation of his glory. Let's go to the first one. What is glory? Opinion, estimate, whether good or bad, concerning someone, resulting in praise, honor and glory. Jesus said, let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your father in heaven. The first time I saw this, I mean, just blew my mind, I never understood it that way. Of course, I had people talking, let your light shine, let your light shine. The first thing I saw was the word soul, not just let it shine, let it so shine before men. Now, did you see that? Not just shine, before men. And then he goes to break it down. And this is a principle for interpreting scripture that you can take away and it will help you a lot. Sometimes God says something in a sentence, but the first part of the sentence, he makes a statement. The second part explains that statement. He said, let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works. This is why it has to be before men, because they're supposed to see something. What are they supposed to see? Your good works. And when they see your good works, what do they do? They glorify your father in heaven. They give glory to your father in heaven. They make an opinion, they form an opinion, an estimation of who he is. They begin to see who he is, why? Because you gave him a reason through your actions. So you are thinking about God hovering over your church building. And God is thinking about the people in the church acting in such a way. The unbelievers will look at you and say, ha, I didn't believe in God until I saw you. I didn't believe God existed until I met you. There is something inside of you, that's what we're talking about. A few years ago, I mean, I would say a few years ago, many years ago, I was still in Poland. A young believer, you know, full of zeal, went through some difficult times because I was so zealous for God and people didn't always understand my zealousness. So sometime, sometimes, you know, it, it met with some form of opposition. And I'm not talking about unbelievers, I'm talking about believers. Sometimes people struggled to understand where I was going. But I remember this one time I had an exam to take. And this was, it was a strange thing, because this professor, he was so different from every other professor that I knew. He had his own notes that were different from what was in the textbooks. Now, all textbooks in physiology were teaching one thing, that man was teaching something else. And you had to know what he taught to pass the exam. It didn't matter that you knew all the physiology in the world. And the way my mind works, if something doesn't make sense, I can't absorb it. So I studied this guy's stuff, I studied, he just wasn't working. So I went for the exam. But before I went for exams, I was pressing, God, I'm in trouble. Because this exam, um, I don't know if I'm going to, I'm going to pass it, I'm afraid. God, you need to intervene on my behalf. And I remember that, was sitting in this exam, it was an oral exam. And in those days, you sat before the professor together with other colleagues of yours, maybe five of you versus the professor. And he was fire question at you, questions at you, he'd go around, then he would come back, go around, then he would come back. You know, and it got to my turn, and then he asked me a question, and I started answering. And then I started missing my answers, because I had read from the textbook and I had read this man's, and I was essentially I lost him. He had his eyes closed whilst I was answering. Suddenly, he opened his eyes and I knew it was trouble. He told me, I am not impressed, but he said that I was shaking. And I was shaking and I would not even remember if I was praying. Within a short period, this man suddenly said, I have to leave the room now. He just left. And then another woman, his, um, associate professor, walked in, sat down and said, professor is feeling unwell and will not be continuing the exam, I will be continuing it. And he passed everybody. There was no way I would have passed that exam with that professor. When we finished, why am I telling this story? When we finished the exam, we were going back to our hostels. When this Muslim guy said to me, essentially, essentially said to me, we passed because God intervened because of you. And I'd never told this guy about God before, I'd never preached to him, I'd never said anything about my God. What I'm trying to say is that as you are living your life as a Christian, people are watching you. They are watching you and they are, they are taking notes. So you might never stand before them and preach, you might never say to them, do this or do that, you might never do that. But you know what? They are taking notes anyway. He said, let your light shine, so shine, it will reach every crack, every darkness. And they will give glory to your God, even though you never preached to them. So God's glory is manifesting in his splendor, in his works, creation, science and wonders, in the actions of men. When men and women like, when, when, when and women act like him, they manifest his glory. So what have I been saying? God has always wanted to fill the earth with his glory. His focus is on being glorified in his sons and daughters. And he had this in mind even before he created the heavens and the earth. But he did not reveal this plan in full in Genesis. All he said was, let us make man in our image, according to our likeness. Let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air and over the cattle, over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps on the earth. Somebody said, that includes the devil because he's a creep. So this is all God said, let's make man in our, man in our image, let's give them dominion. But he said nothing about filling the earth with his glory and all the other reasons for which he created the heavens and the earth. Why did he not reveal his planning for? Now, I want to introduce you to a concept that will help you when you start thinking about fulfilling your calling. One of the reasons why, because we've been talking about how people don't find their calling. But there's another challenge, when you find your calling, it doesn't mean you'll be able to fulfill it. Without being strategic, without understanding what it takes, you might still struggle to fulfill your calling. So I want to introduce one of the tools that, you know, really, really was an eye-opener for me, Vmosa. This is a concept that has been developed in the world. The people of the world have discovered that if you want to start any project and finish it, you need these five things. You need a vision, you need a mission, objectives, strategy and an action plan. It doesn't matter what you want to do. You need these five things, and if you iron out these five things, if you think these five things too very well, your project will be successful. So let's take them in turns. What is a vision? The vision is a dream. The vision is let's, let's put, let's talk about God and his vision. God had a vision involving you and me manifesting his glory. The vision is tied to the desire, the vision is the dream. Then the vision must be crystallized into a clear mission, a mission statement of what you want to do in order to achieve the dream. But the mission statement is usually broad. And it needs to be broad, because if it's too narrow, you will miss things out. Broad, then you go to objectives, then here, this is where you break the mission into object, into smaller goals, smaller achievable goals. Very often, we, so you want to set up a business, or you, you have a burden for children with special needs. Children say with autism or something, and you want to set up an institution to help them. You want to set up whether a school or an activity center, something to help them or to educate even families with this condition. You have the dream, you need to have objectives. Because Rome was not built in a day. God had the dream of sons and daughters manifesting his glory. But he didn't start, he didn't go in all at once. He went in stages. Day one, let there be light. Day two, something else, day three, something else, step by step until he finished. And once he had finished creating the earth, heavens and the earth, and he had populated the earth, he said, now we need a manager. We need somebody that's going to manage all this, that's when he created man in stages. That's what objectives are all about, you don't try to do everything in one go. Even God, who can do all things, he did it in stages. What does that say to us? That's how we are supposed to be operating. The things that God does, he does them so that we can learn from them. We are supposed to also operate in stages. If you try to tackle the whole thing in one go, you'll be overwhelmed. But if you do it in stages, you'll get there. Then you have to have a strategy, a strategy for each objective. So I'll show you a table of how that worked out for God. Next, you have to have an action plan. So strategy is simply, how is this thing going to be achieved? But action plan is, is more concrete. This morning, this is what I will do, tomorrow, that's what I will do, the next day, this is what, this is the person I need to contact for this and that, that's action plan. So God's vision to have sons and daughters manifesting his glory. His mission to create a planet with life on it, fill it with mankind. Fill the earth with sons and daughters who manifest his glory. And all of that broken down into objectives. So if you look at the objectives, the strategy and the action plan, what you see is that for each objective, there's a strategy and an action plan to extend his domain. So he created the heavens and the earth, and he spoke the word, that was the action he took. To have the earth managed by mankind, so he created man, formed him from the death, the dust. To fill the earth with his glory, well, he created man in his image and likeness. He made, created man with the ability to think and act like him. How did he do it? By the breath of life. To redeem mankind, how? Through the death of Jesus. And the action plan involved the, the preaching of the gospel to, to believers, believers believing in the word. To prepare believers for their calling, that's what we are working on. How do you prepare believers for their calling? By helping them to activate their gifts and talents and through discipleship. That's why he placed you in the church, this is an, in, in his essential part of his plan. And one more thing, personal development. It's not enough that God gave apostles and prophets and teachers and evangelists and pastors to shape you. If you, as a believer, don't put in the effort, nothing will happen. The Bible says, desire the sincere milk of God, that you may be, that you may grow thereby. If you go to second Peter, chapter one, he says, above all, give diligence. You want to, 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 um, attain unto the divine nature. Give diligence, so there is a path that depends on you, you must work hard. Now, finally, God is going to return for believers one day, because his desire is to unite all things in heaven and on earth. And we'll see that very quickly, very soon. And he is one day going to catch all the believers on earth in the phenomenon described as the rapture. And he has decided that the action plan for that is that he will return to this earth. So now we're going to, we're going to look at how this, um, this vision is described in the Bible. Now, what you'll discover very quickly is that God's vision is scattered all across the Bible. And his objectives, all these things, they are scattered all over. But two passages in the Bible group them, they bring them together. Those passages are Ephesians, chapter one, from verse three to about verse fourteen or twenty, depending on how you look at it. And Colossians, chapter one. These are the two places where you will find God's plan in full. So let's read Ephesians, chapter one. Praise be to God, the Father of, oh, to God and the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us in the heavenly realms with spirit, every spiritual blessing in Christ. For he chose us in him before the creation of the world, to be holy and blameless in his sight. In love, he predestined us for adoption to sonship through Jesus Christ in accordance, in accordance with his pleasure and will, to the praise of his glorious to the praise of his glorious grace, which he has freely given to us in the one he loves. In him, please notice that phrase, in him. I told you about Jesus, I told you about us being in Jesus, Jesus being in us. In this passage, you will see in him, in Christ, in him, in him, in him. In him, we have redemption through his blood, the forgiveness of sins, in accordance with the riches of God's grace that he lavished on us. With all wisdom and understanding, he made known to us the mystery of his will according to his good pleasure, which he purposed in Christ to be put into effect when the times reach their fulfillment, to bring unity to all things in heaven and on earth under Christ. In him, we were also chosen, having been predestined according to the plan of him who works out everything in conformity with his, the purpose of his will. In order that we who were the first to put our hope in Christ might be to the praise, might be for the praise of his glory. And you were also included in Christ when you heard the message of truth, the gospel of your salvation. When you believed, you were marked in him with a seal, the promised Holy Spirit, who is a deposit, guaranteeing our inheritance until the redemption of those who are God's possession, to the praise of his glory. This passage used to be so difficult for me, I just couldn't understand it. I mean, Paul wrote, it was one single sentence from verse three to verse fourteen, it was one sentence in the Greek. And the translators have done their best to try and, you know, translate the whole thing, but it's hard. It needs to be broken down. So when you break this whole thing down, it says, God chose us in Christ before the creation of the world. Before the foundation of the world, God chose us in Christ. Now, you know, we've been talking about Adam and Eve. We've talked, we've been talking about how God never abandoned his plans. That whatever he wanted to achieve through Adam and Eve, he did not abandon it. That's why your gifts and your talents still matter today. But look, he says he chose us in Christ. In other words, he saw you and me even before he created Adam. And he chose us in Christ means that it pleased him, that he placed us inside Christ. In his mind, we, he placed us inside Christ. We were, he was waiting for the day we would believe. He placed us inside Christ. And in Christ, that's where all the riches are. It's like every good thing that God has is deposited in Christ. And all he's doing is crying to the world. Come, be in Christ. So that you may enjoy my blessings, because all my blessings have deposited in Christ. He says he predestined us for adoption to sonship through Jesus Christ. Now let me explain what this means. Adoption appears in the New Testament, in the book of Romans and also in Ephesians. And it's a bit confusing because we know that we are born again, born of the spirit. Jesus said, he that is born of the spirit is spirit. So if we are born again, well, how come the Bible is talking about adoption? You can't just be, you can't be born into God's family and then be adopted into his family at the same time. Doesn't make sense. We need to understand the concept of adoption as, you know, as, as, as understood in those times. You see, it says adoption to sonship. It didn't say that adopted into your family, to sonship. It's a position that you are, they're adopting you into. In those days, especially in Greek families, you were not an heir. You were not an automatic heir just because you were born in the particular family. You had to graduate to become an heir. That is the sonship that it's referring to. So God predestined you to graduate to sonship. And what does that mean? A son, that's what I wrote in the outline, if you remember in the outline, there are two words that denote sonship. One is teknon, the other one is eus. Teknon refers to offspring, you know, if your biological children, they are your teknon, they are your, your, your sons and daughters. But someone whom you have trained, whether they are a biological child or not, such that they now manifest, they now, they are now people you can boast about, because they have imbibed your teachings and your principles and your ideas, they have your mind. They are now sons in a different meaning altogether. That's what it's talking about. Adoption onto sonship. He, he predestined you that you shouldn't be, remain a baby in Jesus, but you should grow onto sonship. Why? Because only sons get their inheritance. There are riches in Christ, but you will never get those riches until you graduate to sonship, until you understand your inheritance, you understand your father's business. Alexander the Great, one of the greatest leaders that ever lived, was in the, leader of Greece. This guy, he was the son of Philip of Macedon, and Philip of Macedon put Alexander the Great under the tutelage of Aristotle, one of the greatest philosophers that ever lived. And said, teach him. Now, after he had finished teaching him, this is what Alexander the Great said. He said, I inherited my life. How did he put it? He inherited his, something he said he inherited from his father, but his true life he inherited from Aristotle. In other words, Aristotle, the brain inside that he's got, his brain inside his head, the content is coming from Aristotle. And it's the content that would drive his life. So really, his father gave him a, gave him breath, but didn't give him life. The principles required to live life, those came from Aristotle. Now, in those days, fathers did that. They put children under some tutelage, under governors, and Paul writes about it in Galatians, chapter three. They put them under teachers until they, a time came when the father thought, oh, this boy now is beginning to understand me. He's beginning to understand my business. Now I'm going to treat him like an equal. I can share my business with, I can share my business ideas with him, because one day I'm going to leave everything to him. And that son who understood his father's business will now be running his father's affairs. A time will come, the father won't even be doing anything, the son will be doing it. And did you know that that son may not be the elder son? It may be the son, but it will be the son who understood his father's principles the most. It is hard to imagine this in our day, but there's one country where this is happening right now. The kingdom of Saudi Arabia. The Saudi king, he hasn't died yet, but he's kind of retired. And he has passed on all his powers onto his son, Muhammad Ibn Salban. This guy, he is de facto the ruler of Saudi Arabia. Do you know he has brothers? And I, I, he's not even the eldest. But he's the one trusted by his father, who run his father's business. That's the concept we are talking about. God is looking for sons and daughters who understand his business. That's why Jesus said, seek ye first the kingdom of God, seek your father's business. A child that is constantly thinking about his father's business will be the one that will mature quicker to take over that business. But that child who's always playing in the street, playing football, misbehaving, man, doesn't even care about his father's side. You think the father will have the confidence to pass on his business to that son or that daughter? I don't think so. So God is saying, we must mature. He has predestined us to adoption of sonship. He, his predestined simply means he has planned that this should be our destination. That's all it is. He has pre-planned our destination. But pre-planning, as you'd have seen from that Vmosa, doesn't mean that it will be, it will happen. Just because you've, you've foreseen something and you've planned, doesn't mean it will happen. God's plans, heart of God's plans will not come to pass because they are dependent on the will of man. So there are things that God wants, so he has predestined you. This is where, this is the destination he has pre-planned for you. But some people think predestination means that even if you decide to sit in a pub and drink all day and go to a brothel and, and send all, whatever you choose to do, if you've been predestined, it will come to pass. They don't understand predestination. Predestination is not about that. It's not like, um, oh, there's another English word I better explain, but it's not, it's, it's not, it's eluding me at the moment. But it's not that your fate has been sealed and there's nothing that can, can happen. No. He says, I know the thoughts that I have towards you. Thoughts of good, good, good thing, I know the plans I have for your life. Doesn't mean it will come to pass. He said those words through Jeremiah, Jeremiah twenty nine, I think, verse eleven, we like to quote, quote that passage. After Jeremiah finished prophesying, they bundled all the people and sent them to Babylon, captivity. So just because God had good thoughts about them, didn't mean that they were not going to avoid captivity. They had to listen and do their part. So you and I have a part to play. God has a plan, it's beautiful, but that plan will never come to pass if you and I don't play our part. So let's move on. The next point, he says, he redeemed us through the blood of Jesus by forgiving our sins. That's self-explanatory. Then the next one, he placed us in Jesus. That's what I've been talking about. That's the bit that we are missing big time. You will not spend a minute praying against any witches, if you understand that you're placed in Jesus. It's like you are up there, that witch is down here. Why are you bothering? You are seated in Christ Jesus, in heavenly places, and then here you are fighting some witch on the ground? Waste of time, waste of time. These are the things that have occupied the African church. And as I said, you go outside of Africa, they don't even know what you're talking about. If I walk to my pastor and talk about some witch, he'll be so shocked. These are just superstitions from our old and mystic religions that have never been chased out of the church. That's all it is. Superstitions from paganism, but they were never weeded out of the church. The difference between the Christianity we are practicing in Africa and the ones in, and the one in Europe is that in Europe, they dealt with that nonsense three hundred, four hundred years ago. They dealt with it once and for all. They settled the matter of witches, the matter of, they settled those things. So they don't chase those things today. But in Africa, we receive the word of God alongside our paganistic practices. So today, the two things are competing with one another. God says, believe in me, you are in me, you are secure. And then you go and listen to somebody says, hey, there are some witches, this is your grandfather, they buried your umbilical cord here. Nonsense. Which white man can you walk up to and tell this and he will believe you? Believer and unbeliever, these are, these are thoughts, remnants of this, uh, of paganism. Let's chase this nonsense away. If we understand our place in Jesus, that matter is dealt with once and for all. Bible says he sealed us with the promised Holy Spirit. Now here, let me unpack it a little bit. We are God's possession. He bought us with the blood of Jesus. But he didn't take the possession that he bought. You see, it's like you bought something from a shop. Then you tell, you told the man, look, like you, some people do in, in, in Makola, you buy something from a shop and then you say, look, let me go and get a kayak you. Then you go and get a kayak to come and carry the stuff away. So you paid for it, but you've left it with the shopkeeper. So that you can go and get someone to carry the stuff away. That's what's going on here. God saved you and me, but he didn't take us away. Jesus said, I pray for my, he was praying for his disciples, I think it's in John, chapter seventeen or, or verse, or chapter eighteen. He said, I, I pray, not that you should take them from this earth, but you should protect them from the evil one. In other words, God kept his prized possession that he bought with his own blood. He kept it here on earth. But he sealed it with the Holy Spirit. What a seal. What is that seal? The seal is to say, this one is mine, oh, I bought it. This one is mine, this one is, I bought him. It's like you leaving your goods with that shopkeeper, but you write your name on it, so that you don't sell it to someone else. Seal of the Holy Spirit on you and me. So that it's clear whose we are. And the devil knows that you have this seal on you. So why are you afraid of him? He knows who you are. If you don't know who you are, he knows who you, he knows your identity. So that's the sealing of the Holy Spirit. But that's not all. We also, now, God is going to come back one day for his prized possession. In the rapture, that's why, what's what the rapture is all about. I bought you, I'm taking you away and you grab you and take you. His prized possession. But there's also a twist. We ourselves have received the Holy Spirit as a down payment. Because we ourselves are going to enter into our inheritance. That inheritance, it will begin here on earth, but you continue into heaven. When we're talking about things of God in the New Testament, please don't think God has just suspended everything here on earth and it's just when we get to heaven, that is going to be great. No! Eternal life begins here and continues to heaven. The inheritance begins here, it continues to heaven. The par, in the parable of the talents. Remember, the talent, the, the three servants, the three, they, they received talents, one five, the other two, the other one, one. The five and the two, they multiplied it. And when they multiplied, what did the master say to them? Okay, you come, you faithful servant, come and be a ruler over ten cities. Come and be a ruler over four cities. What does that mean? Continuation, just as you were productive here with what I've given you, I'm going to give you more to work on. I mean, see, there are many people who think we are going to go to heaven and then we'll just be singing praise all night and then that's the end, that's what eternity is all about. You haven't read the Bible well. The Bible doesn't say that. There will be the marriage feast, the marriage supper of the lamb, which we will go to. But the Bible tells us that we will come back to earth with Jesus to rule. And that's what that parable is referring to. So you can see that for those servants, what they were doing before and after is similar. That's why you and I can't sit on our house and just relax and we just hang on. Because what you are doing now is going to determine what you're going to be doing, who you are going to become in his kingdom. Now, so your inheritance, that which you are going to inherit, what God is going to put you in charge of, let me bring it down to, in, 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 in real terms, that's what it means. What God is going to go put you in charge of here on earth and in his kingdom to come, he has given you the Holy Spirit as down payment. And this Holy Spirit helps you to, he equips you. He strengthens you. He fires you up. When you are tired, exhausted, spend some time praying in the spirit. You will be revived. When I close from work and I'm shattered and I feel like I go to some quiet place, I like to go into the countryside. I spend some time with the Lord, I come back, I am recharged. It can be just an hour, it can be even thirty minutes. I am recharged, ready to go. Why? Because there's a spirit, a down payment inside me who revives me. And so God, each day the Holy Spirit does that to you. He's showing you that there's greater, because he's, this is just a down payment. There are greater things waiting for us. Okay, so I think I'm going to stop here and take questions or observations. Um, so if you have any questions or if you have any observations, please unmute yourself and let's hear it.
Yeah, hello.
Hello, hello.
Good evening to everybody.
Good evening, good evening.
Um, God bless you, sir, and more grace to you.
Thank you.
Um, I was, I was really blessed today. I was really, really blessed today. Um, I was, I'm just picking up a point and then wanted to talk about it. And lastly, I think what you said, um, about eternal life begins from here. Um, I mean, that is the truth, but there are lots of believers that don't know that. That everything that we have inherited in Christ starts with us on earth till eternity. Yeah. And then you said, um, the beginning about the stronghold. And one thing I believe is that the greatest enemy a believer could have is, I mean, the stronghold, which is, um, um, has to do with our mind. We've been We've been taught to lie for a long time. So it becomes a stronghold. So anytime the truth has been preached, it is so difficult to grasp it. Out of experience about this superstition, you know, I lost my mom not long ago and this thing came in as in going to consult what killed her. And then later on, they want to get us involved. And man of God, believe in me, I was the only person standing, you know, asking, no, I don't accept this. And truly, truly, this is really a problem for some believers because they are not taught the truth. From what we discussed last week about we having this meeting because we need to know, we need knowledge, which the Bible tells us in 1 Timut 2:3-4, that after we are saved, we must come to the knowledge of the truth. So I just, yes, so I just want to bring up this point to encourage us all because it is not easy. The Bible says that Jesus did not bring to us, he said, I don't think I brought peace, but I brought war. Simply because when you are saying the truth, people will not just grasp it, they would fight you. You might lose some friends, you know, they might look at you in a way, but so far as it is the truth. I mean, God is with us, Christ is with us, his spirit is with us, his power is with us. Which at the end of it all, definitely the truth will bring victory. So we should stand with it. We shouldn't compromise no matter what the situation is. The truth is always the truth. So I'll end by saying, whatever we have been taught here or we are learning here, I second, I mean, it's the sole truth. So we have to really take advantage of it so we can also share with our friends and family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. That's a powerful contribution and thank you for standing for the truth. Thank you for standing for God. The Lord, you can be certain that the Lord was pleased with each time we do that we are behaving like true sons and daughters of God. You know, there's too much in the church about believing the Lord Jesus Christ and you be saved. What does believe actually mean? What does, if you believe, if there's a fire in a house and somebody you hear, you are sitting in the house, you don't know there's a fire and you hear fire, 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 and you come outside and somebody says, this building is burning. If you believe that person, will you still stay in that building? I don't think so. You will get whatever you want to get hold of and move out quickly. If you stay in, it means you don't believe. But we have created a new version of belief that you can stay in that building that you believe that has fire, that is on fire. And how can you stay in a building when you know that it's on fire? It means that we don't really believe. So belief leads to action. And that's what you've demonstrated with your action, you believe the word of God. And so if somebody comes to you and tries to tell you, let's do this, this way, or let's do that, I say, no. This is your opportunity to show them that you are the child of God and you belong to a different kingdom. You may not be loved. You may be hated. Jesus' own siblings didn't believe him. The one day they said to him, nobody who wants to be popular hides his activities. Go to Jerusalem if you are this person that you say you are. So we won't always get an applause. But if we stand for the truth, we are behaving like true sons and daughters. God bless you for doing that. I can see somebody's, okay, yeah, yeah, it was you, so you responded. Thank you, thank you for that contribution, that's very powerful. Yes, please, any other suggestions? Somebody's got their hand raised, yeah, please, Bishop, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your work today.
Thank you.
And I am praying that today we seize fire on killing witches, wizards and all, and rather please ourself in Christ.
Amen.
And be saved by the Holy Spirit. So that's our take home message today to all of us, and thank you so much for it.
Amen, amen, thank you for that. It's a real bane for Africa right now. When I was, when I first became a believer in 1990, nobody was talking about witches. You would only talk about witches in the context of we went to preach in some village and there was some witchcraft there, but we brought the gospel there, they were set free and hallelujah, even the witches were set. That was, those were the kind of testimonies that you would hear in those days about witches. But to kill witches, these witches were also created in the image of God. They have gone astray, just like you and I went astray before we found Christ. So how can we pray for their death? If God is someone that prayed for our death and God had listened to us, to them, would we be alive today? So I think it's a total misunderstanding. It shows just how far we've strayed from the simple ways of the Lord. So yes, that's a, that's a very pertinent point. Thank you for, thank you for that contribution. Any other contributions or questions, please, before we finish? Okay, so I'm not seeing any any question, not seeing any hands, so I think we'll probably bring this to a close. And we'll meet again by God's grace, same time, 7pm on Thursday, next Thursday. Have a blessed rest of the week and weekend.
Good night and have a blessing.
Good night.